My name is Reagan Cusmanio and I am the co-chair of the Public Policy Committee with the Overland Park Chamber. Thank you for making time this afternoon, joining us for this forum. I would like to welcome the audience today, both of those who are online and those of you that are physically with us today. The Public Policy Council is a collaborative effort of the 10 chambers of commerce that represent more than 5,000 Johnson County businesses. In addition to hosting forums such as this, the Public Policy Council conducts other voter education efforts, including publishing a wealth of candidate information on the council's website, and you can find that at www.votjoco.com. I'd like to welcome and introduce our candidates, Jamia Haynes and Drew Matrician. I'm going to give a brief overview of today's format. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for an opening statement. After the opening comments, we're going to rotate through the questions that were written by the Public Policy Council, and we will get through as many questions as we can. We will not be taking questions from the audience today. Because this is a forum and not a debate, we will not have built-in times for rebuttal. At the conclusion of our Q and A period, we will give each candidate an opportunity to offer closing remarks. Prior to starting the forum, we did draw numbers, and that will determine who would speak first. And based on that random drawing, we will begin with Drew, and we're going to allow him his one and a half minutes for his opening comments.
All right, well, thank you very much. As Reagan said, I'm Drew Matrician. We're here discussing the Overland Park City Council race for Ward Two. Thank you to the Johnson County Public Policy Council and the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. Thanks for folks in the audience here and folks watching online who will view this recording. I just want to start off by sharing my belief in the power of associations. I worked at Burns &amp; McDonald on infrastructure projects, and prior to that, worked at American Trucking Associations. And we advocated for the interests of the trucking industry. That included small trucking businesses, medium-sized, and large corporations. And we really worked closely with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce to advocate for our shared interests. After five years at the association, working for former Kansas Governor Bill Graves, my wife and I decided to move back home to be closer to family and friends and raise our family here in Overland Park. So, we live in Knoll Hills, and we are raising our 10-month-old daughter. And we're just really excited to raise her in a place where she can be healthy, a place where she can be safe, and a place where she can have access to any opportunity imaginable for her. So, I'm excited to have this discussion about how we can keep Overland Park a great place to raise a family and enjoy high quality of life. Thank you.
Jamia.
Thank you, Reagan, and thank you to the Johnson County Public Policy Council for hosting this forum today. This is an important race, and this is a nice opportunity for voters to hear from candidates that would like to represent them. I've been a member of the Overland Park Chamber for several years through Overland Park Rotary and also through business affiliation. I have experienced and appreciate the support that the Chamber has provided to our business community, so thank you for that. Overland Park has been home for 20 years. My husband Chad and I are proud to have raised our family here. Our daughters Ashley and Emily are both Shawnee Mission South graduates. We are proud Raiders. And like so many of you, we have built special memories over the years raising our family here at Overland Park. I'm a real estate attorney. I serve as general counsel for a locally-owned title company where I've been since their inception almost for 20 years now. We are also proud small business owners in this community, and Chad is a software developer, and his office is in the Aspereia campus. So, I am also glad to have this opportunity and also want to highlight and thank the business community for providing this opportunity. Thank you.
We are going to start with our first question, and that is, do you believe the city of Overland Park is headed in the right direction? And I believe we will go back and start with you, Jamia, and then we will go back to you, Drew.
I do believe Overland Park is headed in the right direction, and I know that that did not happen by accident. That is a partnership and a synergy created by active citizens, talented city staff, and strong leadership. Paul Lyon has been an active, engaged leader for our community for a long time now. I am honored to have his support and his endorsement, and I know that continuing that leadership is important to the city, and I plan to do so. When I ask residents questions about the city and if they have concerns, I'll say, "Do you have concerns about the city?" And the majority of them kind of think about it and say, "No, I like it here. Overland Park's a great place to live. I'm proud to call it home." I want to be a part of continuing that legacy of our community with strong businesses and residents and talent.
Drew, same question.
Sure. So, I share the belief that Overland Park is headed in the right direction. I've been knocking a lot of doors here in Ward Two, and folks generally agree that this is a great place to live. And they don't pay a lot of attention to city government, and I say that, you know, I think that's an indicator that the city's doing a good job. As Jamia said, this didn't happen by accident. This is a result of effective city leadership, effective elected officials, and high-quality city staff over the last several decades. And the resident satisfaction data from our community survey really proves that point. I really appreciate the question, but I also think that beyond just heading in the right direction, the question is, you know, are we drifting in the right direction or are we being intentional about the direction that we're going? To me, that means the question should be, you know, are we bringing people along in our success as a community? Are we bringing our seniors along in our success? Are we bringing minority business owners along in our success? And are we bringing students at Apache Elementary, where my wife teaches in the most diverse school in the Shawnee Mission School District, along in that success? So, I think with the right leadership, our city can continue going in the right direction, not just for the short term, for the next 10 years, but thinking long-term for the next 30 years, so that someday when my daughter makes the decision on where she wants to live, she'll want to live here in Overland Park. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to our next question. And as a candidate, what are your top three policy issues? So Drew, you get the opportunity to answer this question, and then we'll go on to Jamia.
Great. So, my top three policy issues are infrastructure innovation, strong, safe neighborhoods, and then housing. And infrastructure innovation, I think everyone associated with the Chamber knows that the city just passed a 53 to 47 vote on a sales tax initiative to invest in our infrastructure. I've made a career, in my professional career, about investing and managing infrastructure projects effectively. I work every day on some of the region's largest infrastructure projects, and I think voters expect, due to that close margin on that vote, that that money that we're spending gets spent effectively. So, I work with municipalities on their capital improvement planning. I work with municipalities on their grant funding strategy and want to bring that professional experience to City Council. Strong, safe neighborhoods, to me, means investing in our fire departments, our law enforcement, and our really award-winning emergency dispatch services. It also means that my two nieces that walk to school at Deemer Elementary are able to be safe as they're walking to school, and that cars going down Lamar are slow and not distracted. I think Ward Two is a really attractive place to live, and I think we are desirable because of our amenities like Oak Park Mall and Road Park, the Central Resource Library, and I think we want to stay that way, but I think we have to be intentional about that. And then, related to that is housing. Ward Two has a great mix of housing. As you're out in the neighborhoods, you see that, you know, Knoll Hills, where we live, is a great place. Oak Park, where Jamia lives, is a great place to live. But there's also communities like Gramercy Park, where there's townhomes that people can live in, and it's sort of the missing middle. And we also, of course, have various apartment options for people who either don't want to live in apartments, which is appealing, or in single-family houses, which is appealing to me when I'm mowing the lawn in 100-degree heat, or people that can't afford to purchase a home. And that's especially common in our younger generation. So, infrastructure, strong neighborhoods, and housing. And then underneath all that, I would ask myself, are we doing this in an environmentally sustainable way?
Jamia, same question.
Okay. My three issues are safe and healthy neighborhoods, and Chief Donchess tells us that the police force is down by 34 officers, and that is something that the 2024 budget is highlighting is recruitment efforts for police and fire. I think that's very important, and I'm glad to see that. At our NE neighborhood executive committee meetings, we hear from our association and other associations that folks want safe neighborhoods. So, that's an important emphasis that I think should be, continue to be focused for us. Secondly, involved with that is the mental health, focus on the mental health issues in our community, and I think that's an area that we really need to gain some ground on. Overland Park Crisis Action Team is also an area of focus for the 24 budget, and they're going to have fund further co-responders, and I think that that's an important aspect. Secondly, infrastructure and connectivity. And with the recent passage of the increased infrastructure financing, I am hopeful that we will continue to maintain our aging infrastructure. And I'll tell you that connectivity and walkability is so important to so many people that I talk to. I recently walked a neighborhood where there was a young lady that was very sharp, and she was five years old, and she was skateboarding. And she asked what I was up to, and I told her that the city addresses issues like streets and bridges and sidewalks. And she said, "Well, I want to show you something." So, she showed me a portion of the sidewalk that has been buckling, and she hurt herself skateboarding, and she is no longer allowed to go to that section. And so, she's not very happy about that. And so, she told me that this needs to be fixed, and she is right. So, I will tell you that connectivity is so important to so many of our residents. Finally, government accountability. When I think about accountability, I think about the budget. We need to maintain a responsible and sustainable fiscal position. We need to balance the city's service needs along with a healthy budget. And those are three things that are important to my campaign.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to our next question, and we'll start with you, Jamia. What are your views on the services and the value the city's residents receive for their local tax dollars?
I think that we receive great value for our tax dollars. We are one of the lowest in our neighboring communities for tax rates, and we also have the lowest first-class cities in Kansas. We're fortunate to receive award-winning emergency services in cities with highly-qualified staff members, extensive amenities like beautiful parks and pools and golf courses, as well as the farmstead and our verity. Tax dollars are generated by our homeowners and by our businesses. People are struggling, and we need to make the most of our tax dollars and work to maintain low property taxes. We need to make sure that our tax dollars go as far as they can, but I think that we certainly receive a value, and that's why people want to live here in Overland Park.
Thank you. Drew, same question.
Yeah, I share the belief that our residents in Overland Park receive very good value for our tax dollars. We have the benefit of very low property tax rates, but also high-quality city services. As our city continues to grow and our infrastructure and amenities continue to age, one of the top priorities on council is to continue to get a great deal for our taxpayers, whether that's the business community or residents in Ward Two. So, if folks in Ward Two see a city issue that doesn't meet their expectations, we need to have qualified city staff that's able to address those issues and find solutions. With that said, I think we're all feeling the belt tightening on our budgets as property tax assessments continue to rise and skyrocket, really, and property tax rates continue to go up. On my website, I'm very clear, I want to keep property taxes as low as possible during my tenure on City Council, and that's a priority for me. Well, I think we're getting a good deal for our tax dollars. Really, the number-one complaint I hear when I'm out knocking doors in Ward Two is people saying that their property taxes are going up too high. And when you couple that with Evergy trying to raise rates, increasing our energy prices, as well as add in inflation, I mean, we are really starting to feel, people are starting to really feel limitations on their budget, and they're having questions about the affordability of being able to stay in Overland Park. So, we have to find a way to provide property tax relief, and there's been some solutions put forward. I don't know if there's a question later about property tax relief, but there's been solutions put forward that the certain committees have really not been receptive of, and that's a big disappointment to me. I think there should be at least conversation in the next fiscal year's budget cycle on how do we provide property tax relief in a targeted way to people who are feeling it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question, and we'll start with you for your answer, Drew. What role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development to bring jobs and capital investment to the community?
Sure. So, healthy economic development provides opportunity for our folks in Ward Two, and it also allows us to keep our property taxes low, which we just talked about. So, I think the city has a really strong role to play in economic development. To me, economic development is not just adding jobs, it's adding high-quality jobs, adding good jobs that are well-paying in innovative industries. Up to this point in Overland Park's history, we've been a very attractive place for capital investment, and we've been very successful at attracting new investment to our community. But obviously, market conditions are changing, right? Overland Park has been a great place historically for office buildings, but I don't know if I've seen any office building vacancy rates lately, but I've imagined that vacancies are up and that their market is shifting quite substantially. So, the question is, how do we continue to play to our strengths as a city? And I think what we're going to end up seeing more of is mixed-use development, where you're combining housing that's walkable to retail to office spaces, and we're seeing some of that already in Overland Park. Those mixed-use developments are going to leverage some of the city's own assets, like our transportation system, our parks, and some of our recreational opportunities. So, to foster that development, we've got to keep being as walkable as possible. We've got to keep investing in our parks and our trails. And on the economic development front, we've got to recruit employers that want to invest here. So, but we do need to be clear about one thing in this conversation. While Overland Park has always been the crown jewel in the region, our neighbors are catching up Oletha and Lenexa and Lee's Summit are some of the cities that have really started to be attractive for investment. And part of that is due to some of the anti-growth voices in Overland Park, and we've got to respond to those voices and make sure that folks know they can invest in our community. And if we miss out on those opportunities, that's going to be missing out on opportunities for our residents here in Ward Two. One thing I'd like to see on economic development is the city and the Chamber and the county working together on childcare access. That's very important to me, and if we want to keep people in the job market, we've got to figure out a solution to our childcare issues.
Thank you. Jamia, same question for you.
Thank you. So, the city plays an important role in economic development, and having been fortunate enough to grow with a small business, I understand the importance of fueling the economy with creating jobs and economic development. I think the key to that is strategic partnerships with the business community, the Chamber, our excellent schools, public entities, Visit OP. When I learned more about what Visit OP is doing and bringing people and funds to our community, it's amazing. It's a wonderful way for us to bring people here. And to Drew's point, we want to continue to win that recruitment challenge, which we will do through that synergy of different avenues that we can plug people into our economy here. I think continuing planning for the future, as we look, we want to be both a regional and national leader, and to this point, too, that will come with collaboration with new businesses and area communities.
Thank you. Jamia, we're going to start with you on the next question, and then we'll go to Drew. As the city considers future development and redevelopment projects, describe your views on how the city should best manage growth.
Sure. So, I think that future development management should be done in a manner that maintains a high level of quality that's synonymous with Overland Park that we're used to, while encompassing well-planned neighborhoods that contemplate, above anything, maybe most important right now is affordable housing. Growth should reflect our communities, our communities' values and priorities. It should be balanced. It should be intentional. I think updating our outdated comprehensive plan is a wonderful step forward. I serve on the Framework OP Housing Choices Committee, and I have learned that that has been some difficult discussions in reviewing that and learning that what we're comfortable with may not be what works in the next chapter. I know that this is a good opportunity for us to make changes that will adapt for us in the future. I think that there are varying opinions as to public-private partnerships, and I will say that I think there's a place for that. I know that when I first moved, we first bought our house, we rarely went to 95th and Antioch, and there wasn't a reason to, although it was close by. And now, we're there all the time because it's been revitalized as a successful tax-incentive program. Now, with that said, I would say that when tax incentives are utilized, it needs to be in a judicious way, and it needs to reflect the priorities of our community when they're in use.
Drew, same question for you.
Yeah, so, the question really kind of assumes growth, and I don't come from the perspective that growth is a given. I think that growth for the sake of growth is not necessarily good growth. We want good, sustainable growth that improves quality of life for our current residents and allows us to attract high-growth industries. The city has a playbook for how we want to manage growth, and that is the Forward OP document. It's a vision document, and, you know, I was just reviewing it, and I think there's three terms that really stand out to me that the Forward OP Vision Document shares with us: forward-thinking, innovative, and welcoming. One of the goals of the Forward OP document is a high-quality, sustainable, and attractive built environment. And I think projects come to the city, and we have an expectation that we have standards and codes that they should follow for how our buildings look, and I think that's very important to create an attractive community that people want to live in or move to. And the other goal I want to highlight is the idea of a connected city. People should have really viable, multimodal transportation options, investment in bike lanes, investments in sidewalks, investment in transit, traffic signals, which is coming thanks to the sales tax increase, and then traffic calming, which the traffic calming plan is being updated right now. So, I think the city should encourage good growth by sticking to the community-driven Vision Document that we put together, Forward OP, as well as Vision Metcalf, and I think we can continue to attract good projects and also build publicly-owned assets for our community.
Thank you. We'll go on to question six, and we'll start with you, Drew. What are the greatest challenges the city faces over the next 10 years, and how would you address them?
Yeah, sure. So, the greatest challenge from my perspective is, you know, we just raised, over the course of 10 years, almost $215 million to invest in transportation projects, and the community wants to get a good return on that investment. So, we've got to do a good job of managing that money. So, the biggest challenge is really infrastructure investment and specific ways that we can manage that money well. Specific policy solutions that I'd like to introduce during my time on council are moving away from kind of an invite-only procurement method where we're putting out projects for bid to only certain contractors. I don't think that that's necessarily getting us the most competitive pricing. A couple other things are, you know, the city on vertical construction projects, like our new fire station, is using a delivery method that's different from design, bid, build. They're using a construction manager at risk. So, exploring those types of delivery methods on road infrastructure projects to get a good return on those investments. And then lastly, I just mentioned, updating our traffic calming policy to really make sure that our community is safe. So, I think infrastructure is really what people are interested in right now in this election. I think it's an important priority, and I think if we do a good job, people will see the return that the city is providing for that investment, and if we do a bad job, you know, it'll be tough to ask the community for more taxes to fund our projects.
Thank you. Jamia, same question.
I think that political division working its way down to the local level threatens progress and collaboration, and this position is about representing and improving our city for everyone, and that's how I will serve. The council should work together, the shared vision, to move our city forward. I think also addressing aging infrastructure, as we've talked about today, is, should be an ongoing focus for our city, and expounding housing opportunities. And I think that that missing middle housing unit can better meet our needs, and especially in redevelopment areas. We need to look at condominiums and duplexes and cottage homes, and we need to be creative as we move forward with our housing options. And, you know, I want our college-age daughters to move back to Overland Park. My mom is recently retired and is on a fixed income, like so many other people are, and she is recently relocated here, too. And I think it's able, for us to be able to accommodate those residents with affordable housing, we're going to have to be creative and inclusive as we move forward. As an attorney, I know the solutions come from collaboration, and I will work on various boards and committees, and they all require collaboration as well. That's how I plan to lead and work on the city council.
Thank you. And our last question, we're going to start with you, Jamia. What specific proposals do you have to support the goal of providing accessible housing throughout the city?
Well, I think that we focus on missing middle groups, as I had mentioned, those retirees that are on fixed incomes, young adults that are just starting out, they need affordable housing options. Housing hasn't been addressed in land use historically in Overland Park, and so we need to look at that and decide what that looks like going forward. I know that unfortunately, also another piece of this is that we have a growing number of households that are cost-burdened. And so, when I worked on, I served on CDVG, I was very impressed by the Minor Home Repair Program, and they created affordable housing options by providing assistance to lower-income homeowners to maintain their properties. Those programs assist with ensuring that folks' homes don't fall in disrepair. So, moving forward, I just think we need to be more creative and inclusive as we think about the folks that need housing that don't have it now.
Drew, same question for you.
Sure. So, I mentioned this earlier, but the city considered briefly in the Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee a property tax rebate program. Six of our neighboring communities have been able to implement a program where they're providing cash relief to seniors on a fixed income who have home values below a certain threshold. I was very disappointed to see that that idea was soundly rejected. Not just the policy, but the idea that we should be providing relief to seniors was rejected by the committee. You know, I think if our neighbors can do it, we should be able to try, and I know the county is trying to implement a program that we can dovetail with to provide that property tax relief. So, that's one. Updating our city codes to attract missing-middle housing, of course, we should be trying to attract townhomes. It was encouraging to see two recent projects come through City Council that had significant townhome elements to them, and I hope that that's an indicator that the market is driving more towards some of that missing-middle housing. And then third, I think the city passed a party ordinance on Airbnbs. I think we can take a step further on what we're doing on non-owner-occupied Airbnbs or Verbos or short-term rentals, not to call out any specific brands. But I think, you know, further limits on how we're handling those, especially as we look for 2026 when the World Cup is coming to town, you know, we need to be considering the impact on those on our neighborhoods. But I generally just want to advance a portfolio of housing options, all types of different kinds of housing options for our city.
So, thank you so much to both of you for sharing your thoughts with us today. We're going to close out the forum, and you will each have one and a half minutes for your closing thoughts. We're going to start with you, Drew, to give your closing statement, and then we'll move to you, Jamia.
Great. Well, thank you again to the folks in the room watching, or folks who are going to watch online. Drew Matrician, I'm working hard to earn your vote as the next city council member in Overland Park in Ward Two. What I hope you got out of watching this forum was very specific answers from me on how we can address some of the city's issues, continue to be a successful community, but also make improvements. You know, our campaign has really received tremendous support from friends, family, business community, and our neighbors in Ward Two, and I feel a really strong responsibility to run a positive race that the folks in Ward Two deserve. When I graduated from college a decade ago, I raised my hand and did a year of national service through AmeriCorps and in a disadvantaged fourth-grade math classroom in Washington, DC. And... And I did that with a sense of idealism and a belief that people could come together and work collaboratively to solve problems for a community. The students in that class came to school with gun violence trauma or lack of access to nutritional foods, so school wasn't a priority. But I'm very proud to say that a few months ago, those fourth graders grew up and graduated from high school and are able to enjoy the opportunities presented to them. Now, as a father to a 10-month-old daughter and a public policy professional in the infrastructure industry, I'm hoping and want to bring my professional experience and my life experience as a father to this role on City Council. I think both of those perspectives are important to have. But most importantly, I just want to share that I still have that same idealism in my head when I signed up for AmeriCorps a decade ago. I swore an oath on the White House South Lawn to get things done for America, to make our people safer, smarter, and healthier, and to carry that commitment with me this year and beyond. And now we are in the beyond time, and I hope that you all will help me continue to fulfill that oath by electing me to City Council here in Ward Two in Overland Park. Thank you.
Jamia, thank you.
I thank you, Reagan, for moderating, and thanks to the Johnson County Public Policy Council for having us here today and for highlighting the importance of local elections. I care about our community, and that's why I'm here. You all watching and attending today care about our community, too. My leadership reflects your values. I have a long history of leadership in this community. Public service is my passion. Over the years, it's been my honor to serve in our neighborhoods, in our community, in our schools, on PTA, in my church, on many city committees, and on various service organizations. I'm ready to put a lifetime of experience building consensus to work on the City Council. My long history of civic involvement in Overland Park shows that I care, and I've been active in various aspects of it. My business experience also shows that I'm qualified to serve. Our residents deserve to be represented by a council member who has civic experience and a history with our city. I ask for your vote on November 7. Together, we'll put our community's interests first and continue to make Overland Park a city that we're proud to call home.
Thank you. Thank you again to both of you for providing your comments and your information to our group of constituents here today, and then also to those who are online. I would like to remind the audience that the recording from today, along with other election-related information, will be available at www.votejoke.com. And advanced voting in person begins on Saturday, October 28. And Election Day is Tuesday, November 7. Thank you so much for participating, and thank you to the audience for your participation today as well.